Will you please join us and councilmen and councilwoman, will you please?
Yeah, I gotta say something. Am I still hooked up here?
Yes, you are.
I'm still hooked up? I forgot to make sure that everybody knows that Ms. Alonso is by far the best city manager. I'm a little bit... city manager is. And you people that are coming up lean on him for your decisions so you get the proper idea of what's really going on. That's all I got.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, and this is the first congratulatory certificate that you received, signed by the Mayor of Miami-Dade County, Daniela Levin-Cava, the Sherman, Josepe Bedias, and myself. On behalf of the residents of Miami-Dade County, we want to commend you on this special day, wishing you the very best on this occasion, and promising you that we will continue working together. Congratulations, Mayor Maria Puente Mitchell. Thank you. Eddie, give me all of them because if not, it's gonna...
Trying.
Whoever you want. Okay, Councilman Bob Best. Where are you? And his last name is the Best. You know how much we love you. And throughout the years, it has been a pleasure, and it will be a pleasure to continue working with you. So that's why I am very honored to present to you also this certificate.
Entirely to count, Commissioner. Thank you so much.
Councilman Walter Fajé.
You said it right.
Of course, I'm a teacher.
Somebody from outside had to come in and say it right.
You forgot that I'm a teacher? The same to you. We are very proud of everything you have been accomplishing for the city, and we commit to continue working together. Congratulations to you.
Thank you, ladies.
Wow. Councilwoman Jackie Bravo. What a pleasure to send to you this certificate, wishing you the best. I know that at the beginning, we learn a lot, but then everyone becomes a teacher very fast. Because working together and having the community in mind when we make decisions makes a difference. Wishing you the best. Congratulations to you. He helped me everything. That's why I have to help him.
I have to. I'm not the mayor anymore.
A mayor is always a mayor.
Oh, I know.
Councilman Vázquez, the same goes to you. It's a pleasure to present to you this certificate on behalf of the residents of Miami-Dade County, but especially to all of you from the residents of Miami Springs. Let's continue working together. Let's continue serving this beautiful community. And congratulations, today is a happy day in Miami Springs. Can we take a picture now?
Here, seat four, come over. Mr. Vázquez, Councilman Vázquez, right over here.
I follow instructions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, before you all go, the city clerk has a presentation for Mayor Bain.
Right in the center.
Yes. This is a token of our appreciation on behalf of administration and staff. And thinking this through, I'm sorry, Grace, but I think I'm gonna make it up at the end, so. We are presenting you with a gavel that you could use at home. Your dates of service, and so thank you. Thank you for your service, sir. And to make up for that...
That's beautiful. That's better than the one I got the first time.
We got you a nice gift basket with some wine there for you two to enjoy. Yes, for you two.
All right, so they're gonna start the next...
First of all, like John Boehner did to Nancy Pelosi. I passed the gavel.
Billy Bain will email you.
Oh, yeah, bring a pair over just for you.
The mayor know that I am going to, before winter comes and it gets cold, I'm gonna learn how to knit. I promised you a sweater, and I'm gonna learn how to knit, so don't you worry. Before it gets winter, I will get that Miami Springs sweater for you.
Thank you very much. I'd rather you buy me something.
So before you all go, the city council will now take their places, and we're gonna commence the next city council meeting, so.
The official meeting's starting now for the gavel.
Hey, there. Lovely field for coming.
Thank you, thank you.
Oh, that's beautiful. Oh, there you go.
Okay, cool.
Welcome, councilmen.
Wait a minute now.
I don't hear your mic. Is it on?
Hello? Here we go.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna start the meeting in one minute, okay? Just give everyone a chance to settle down.
Test, test, test. Test, test. And don't you want the masks off? I was gonna say. Get the masks off.
Well, we're socially distanced anyway. You guys are, in a way, too. If you went over another foot, you guys would be...
There you go. All right, we're done.
With masks?
Oh, well, I've been done with that for a while, but yes. Yes, here.
You got them on there? Ready?
Yes.
Ready to look. Yeah, I know. That I know. I changed my cards out, so. I told Eric, I said, "Don't be proud of me."
Testing.
Okay, uh-huh, yes, testing.
Sorry?
You're gonna get one of the help council together. You're gonna guide me here?
Yes. Of course I will. Just if you have anything that you're not sure about, just look at me and I'll help you. Basically, tonight, what we're gonna do is we're gonna vote on the minutes for the last meeting. Which, have you read them?
I did.
Okay.
Is my mic on or no?
And then there's ceremony, Chris Cottle, I think. And other things, basic celebratory stuff. And old business. So if you feel strongly about an issue and you want to weigh in on an issue, just go through the chair, Mr. Mayor, through the chair.
Mayor's...
He's in charge on me. Chair, let me move the item.
Test, test. It should be working.
Or if you wanna second it, just go second.
Which means to give it importance?
Which means? No, second means you need a first and a second to pass any bill. Just want to test, test, test.
Is that there?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I was trying to... Before we start the meeting, I just want, on behalf of everyone here at the council, to thank all of you for being here, and I know that a lot of people are at home also with the well wishes that we've received for the new council. Your support for the elected officials here in helping us decide what are the best decisions that we have to make for our city is so important, it's so critical to making sure that we do the best we can. So with that, let's call the roll. Mayor Mitchell? Here. Vice Mayor Best?
Present.
Councilwoman Bravo?
Present.
Councilman Fajé?
Here.
Councilman Vázquez?
Here.
Okay. Invitation, stand for the invitation. Again. Again, I've asked... I've asked the Reverend Wernell Vickers, my good friend, colleague, and spiritual mentor for over 20 years, to give us the invocation. He is here with his wife, Dr. Robin Vickers. Even though they don't live in Miami Springs, they're very familiar with our city and have always looked out for us.
Let us pray. Father God, I pray that you would guide the leaders of this great city of Miami Springs in a successful way. I pray that you would crown them with wisdom, knowledge, and understanding to help them with effective strategies that will be a blessing to the residents of this city. Guide the city council under the leadership of Mayor Baril Mitchell to move forward as a team in a meaningful way. It is my prayer that you would help this council tackle all the tough issues that faces this city and generate good plans with excellent solutions that are practical and sustainable. Guide them in the best way to take action to accomplish all their goals and fulfill the ambition for the city, and leave the residents of Miami Springs inspired, in Jesus mighty name. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Vickers. And now we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Girl Scout troop is here, and they're going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And it's Girl Scout troop 25... sorry, 2564. Hand over your card. Girls. We'll wait for you to start.
Our pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Mayor, on behalf of Girl Scout troop 2564, we would like to honor you and thank you for being the first female mayor in our wonderful city. Your inspiration to these girls and the leadership of people that work for you. So on behalf of the girls, we brought flowers for you. Valley givers from flowers, and also for Ms. Bravo. Welcome, and thank you for your appointment. And so the rest of the council don't feel left out, we did bring you some Girl Scout cookies. And implements, which are implements with vanilla ice cream. So, and in the freezer, so enjoy, enjoy. Thank you again.
Thank you so much. And I know I've told Connie, the Girl Scout leader, this and the other moms. These girls have been so involved with the city for years. They're gonna be our historians, our city historians, because they know the civic issues that have been going on. They've been so involved in big ways and in little ways. And so many times, and this is what makes our community so great, so many times when the city's doing something, this Girl Scout troop will reach out to us and say that they would like to assist, and they've already looked at it and figured out a way that they want to assist. It's not just we want to help if we can, it's like we would like to do this as part of the project, and that's greatly appreciated. Thank you, girls, very much.
Connie, Connie, through the chair, before you leave, just so everybody's aware of this, this troop on Veterans Day, on November 11th, did the research on who is a veteran in Miami Springs and stuck an American flag in every one of their yards. Come on, come on, man. So we know that.
Thank you, thank you. So, let's see, awards and presentations. We have a presentation by the Fire Chief, Adam Kaminsky, Miami-Dade Fire Rescue. And he's going to speak to us regarding the department's accomplishments and services to the city of Miami Springs. Welcome to him.
PowerPoint presentation. First of all, good evening. Congratulations, Madam Mayor, the council member, Vice Mayor, as well as City Manager Alonso. Good evening. Alan Kaminsky, Fire Chief, Miami-Dade Fire Rescue. 26-year veteran of the fire service, all been all throughout the department. Last rank was Assistant Fire Chief, as well as Fire Marshal, current firefighter in the community. Tonight's presentation, just wanted to go over in regards to our annual service of last year to the city of Miami Springs. Miami-Dade Fire Rescue originated in 1935, our largest fire rescue department in the southeast United States, among top 10 largest in the nation, or actually the sixth one. 2,700 employees, 2,105 sworn, and 595 civilians. We have 154 frontline units, 59 ALS transport units, and 60 suppression units, fire trucks. We have 71 fire rescue stations, two full-time air rescue helicopters accredited by the Center for Public Safety Commission on fire accreditation and national. Insurance Services Office ISO rating is a 2/2S. Some of our highlights, Emergency Medical Services EMS, 90% of MDFR unit staff to provide advanced life support services. Miami-Dade County residents have the highest survival rates in the nation from blocked coronary artery, or in MI. We were a part of establishing the STENI, which is the ST elevation myocardial infarction network over 10 years ago. Also part of the countywide stroke network. Some of our highlights in 2020, we hired 106 new firefighters, had four recruit classes going on last year. Some of our new units and new service, we placed two new units in service, Agent 68 out of Drought North, as well as Rescue 71 out of Cutler Ridge. Replaced two foam trucks, our Foam 1 at MIA, as well as our Foam 3 out of Miami. Two new fireboats as well this year, Fireboat 21 at the Palo Alto Marina, as well as Fireboat 73 out of Fort Miami. We opened one new fire rescue station, which is temporary Westwood Lake Fire Rescue Station 41, located at 4911 Southwest 117th Avenue. MDFR has proudly been serving the city of Miami Springs since 1979. In 2020, MDFR responded to 2,314 emergency calls within the city. 90% of the prior responses into the city were provided by Station 35, which is housed right here in Miami Springs, responded to 1,741 incidents. Station 59 out of MIA North responded to 338, and then other surrounding stations responded to 235. There are just a picture of Station 35 and Station 59, which provided the majority of responses within the city of Miami Springs. We have eight fire rescue stations within 5.26 miles of the city. A total of 17 frontline units serving the city, which consists of one battalion chief, seven rescue units, and nine suppression or fire trucks. Daily, there are 54 firefighter paramedic EMTs on duty, providing service to this great city. Next slide just shows an overall picture of the city and the surrounding stations throughout. 2020 incidents and response times of the 2,314 total incidents, life threatening was 1,223, non-life threatening was 531, structure fires was 23, other fires was 214, and other emergencies was 523. Life threatening emergencies countywide average is 7 minutes 59 seconds. City average was 6 minutes and 45 seconds. The structure fires countywide is 622, and the city average is 453. For 2021, so far, we responded to 673 total incidents. Next slide is our 2020 MDFR customer feedback survey. We sent out to 20% of MDFR EMS patients monthly. Countywide, 3,136 respondents, 10% return surveys, yielded an overall score of 4.86. 20 city residents returned surveys yielded an overall score of 4.81, 96% of a satisfaction rate. One comment from a city resident, "Kind and caring when I was frightened during a medical emergency. The team put me at ease and did not leave until I was recovered." So that means a lot when we see good, positive feedback from the community. With that, that's an overall just recap of our service for 2020. There's any questions?
Through the chair, I thank you for being here tonight, sir. And I know for a fact that I can speak to Engine Unit 35 for sure, being right here in the middle of our city. And the response times are like, I think even maybe half within the city of Miami Springs of what you just said. And we're very grateful for that, sir.
Any other comments, Chief? Chief, thank you so much for your presentation. Thank you for your support, for our city, for being there. It's, I know not every city is lucky enough to have a fire station right in the center of our town like we do, and right next door to our police department, which helps with the communication and coordination. Do you have any recommendations for our city going forward from your fire department?
No, I mean, I think, you know, with having ALS suppression or rescue rate within the city, I mean, it works out great, great response times, and, you know, we're gonna continue to build and grow throughout. So, no, just your continued support in, you know, our service. You know, proud and honored to provide the service to the residents of Miami Springs.
Thank you, Chief.
All right, and then I also, just real quick, had a plaque we didn't get to deliver last year, so I just wanted to present this to you this year. The city of Miami Springs, serving since 1979 from Miami-Dade Fire Rescue.
Nice. Williams' office.
Thank you. Could we get a picture of the council with the fire chief? Because I know he's only here, like, hopefully only once a year, right? When something's going very wrong, so. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And Chief, I would ask you, I'm sorry if we'd have asked about the homebound vaccines. We've heard that the fire department is going to be providing that service for us.
Yes, well, we've been providing the service throughout the county for county within, I guess, our public housing, as well as our past. We're coordinating through the state effort. So there's gonna be a link that'll be posted soon, which any homebound residents will be able to sign up to, you know, receive the homebound vaccine.
So there would be a link with the fire department for them to sign up?
Yes, well, actually, that's gonna come through the state. So right now with the fire department, you know, unfortunately, we only have a few vaccines within the county, so we're kind of managing three, what we call open pods. So one at Tropical Park, one down in Homestead, and one at Miami Zoo. And then the state care as well as the federal. So we're at, you know, there are Hard Rock, there are Marlin, Miami-Dade North, which is where we originally, you know, had a site set up. We also are providing homebound vaccines, but right now it's for, since we only have a few weeks, 24 days. So we're very limited to what we can give out as a...
We have a large senior population in Miami Springs, and our senior center can coordinate with you, of course, with our seniors, with our city manager, to try to do that as kindly as possible. I know we have a lot of seniors that are just at home and hoping. It's very difficult for them to get out, to get, even when we've had vaccination sites here in the Springs, they're unable to be their house. Anything you can help with getting that for us as fast as possible, we greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Beautiful. Okay, next on the agenda is a presentation by Chris Cottle from the Cottle and Cottle family on the Coach Cottle Cares Foundation, and they just had their golf tournament at our golf course this Saturday, the first annual Coach Cottle Cares Foundation Golf Tournament.
Well, first of all, it's an honor and a pleasure to be here tonight. This is exciting times, and to be here, the first night of the new council in front of you, Mayor, as the first night is just, it's an honor for us as a family. So I want to thank William for allowing us to be here tonight and inviting us to present what we've accomplished here so far. So first, I want to introduce everyone who's with me tonight. It's my wife, Doris Cottle, my mom, Judy Cottle, my son, Jacob Cottle. And we're here tonight to talk a little bit about excitement that we have around the creation of what we call the Coach Cottle Cares Foundation. And for those of you who don't know, Jim, my dad, was a long-term, longtime citizen of Miami Springs. He was designated a pioneer many, many years ago. He served here in the council, but for many years, he was the original founder of the Parks and Recreation, as a team, Parks and Recreation Department in the original building that we stay in today. So you will see his name here on the wall, inside here, the wall of fame, as well as a few months ago, we were blessed enough to have the council... a few months ago, we were blessed enough to have the council in Mississauga, uh, sign up on the street out in front of the Recreation Department here to be named after my dad, Jim Cottle. So at that time, we decided that we wanted to continue his legacy and we formed along with myself, along with the family and my son Jacob, we formed the CoachCottleCares.org Foundation. And we're excited to announce that its website is up and running and it's live and it's a, it's a wonderful tribute to really the, the history of all the things that Jim was able to do in this community and also prior to that, serving his country and, and continuing to advance all of those around him as he, as he grew old. So he was able to do, he was very extremely proud of this community. And so we felt that there was, the only thing we could really do is to continue his legacy by continuing to give back to the community. So we've created the foundation and we had our first event on Friday here at the golf course, and I want to thank Paul Odell and Mason Kegley, they were very instrumental in helping us to organize the golf tournament. We had about 40 players and we raised money. And the money that we raised, first and foremost, one of the things we did was we gave out golf towels. My dad's motto, for those of you who remember my dad as far as being his, their coach, which was a lot of people in this town, including our former mayor, Bane, was to play hard and have fun. And he would always say that before the kids went out to play. And so we have golf towels for, for all the new council, my son Jacob will hand those out for you all, first of all, so we can promote the, the website a little bit. And so our first event was to raise money to donate external defibrillators to the city. And it's, it's near and dear to all of us to, as Mayor Mitchell, who attended the ceremony, said to, for everyone to be able to enjoy recreation in Miami Springs, it's known state that they are, there is help if needed by, standing by. And so there was a couple of different places where we thought that we could use the funds that were created on Friday to place the AEDs. I'm proud to say that we put the first one on the wall today at the country club. It's right in the breezeway as you go in so that it'll be between, it's between the pro shop and the restaurant so that if the pro shops close, anybody in the restaurant who should need it, it's there on the wall. And we're going to continue to do these, this, this is the next one that's going to go in. I, I'm going to rely on either the, the council, the mayor, and also William to let us know where you all think this is best. I, you know, we, you have one here, which is great in this department. I know we have one in the Aquatic Center, maybe in the Senior Center, this is the new version. I want to thank Sentas. Sentas was instrumental in getting these for us. They, we purchased two and they donated a third. And so it's very nice of them to do that. Jack Scalo is the young man who helped us with that. So, so with that, I just want to say thank you. We're going to continue to be here. The mission of the Coach Cottle Cares Foundation is just to promote community advancement through recreation and fellowship. And so we will continue to do whatever kind of events we can have, whether it's at the, the, the market downtown, or you'll see us around town here and there trying to do some fundraising. And we'll always have a specific reason for it and we'll be very transparent, obviously, with where the, the funds go. If it's for young girls and boys who want to participate in the athletic programs here that can't afford to do so, whether it's for jerseys all the way through the Senior Center and helping our, our senior citizens here in town with, with meals and voluntary things and things like that. My mom, would you like to say anything?
I'm going to take this down, but it's hard to breathe with it. But I do want to thank the, the city council and I want to thank William Alonso. They have been just terrific with okaying the things that we wanted to do. I wish all of you the very best and we're rooting for you and we'll keep in touch. And as Jim says, keep going. He always did thumbs up, everything's okay.
No, just to make sure, we can't wait for the sports programs to open again because I envision that there's a lot of children that don't even, you know, are not able to play. And that was like my little thing, I really want to be able to, you know, sponsor and kind of silence sponsor for, let's say there's a group of kids that can't play or can't afford to play a sport. So that was mission that I talked to Jacob about a lot. So I'm hoping that that, it can get the sports going soon.
Nice. Okay, congratulations to all the council and we're here to help. Please visit the website and share it with as many people as you can. The more traffic, the more that will get out. We, you know, the motto, if you look at the, it's, it's, everything on the foundation was done by our family. We have Jim's sketch in the middle of a heart and that was done by our niece, my niece Megan Cottle. And we, you know, the motto is that Miami Springs is at the heart of it all. And we feel like Jim was at the heart of Miami Springs. So that's kind of the message, the message there. And, and so we appreciate the opportunity and we'll, we'll be here to support as much as we can and. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, let's say the, the, one of the biggest strengths of our community, what makes us so unique is the, just the organizations, the civic organizations, the clubs, the, the families that just work constantly behind the scenes, the Girl Scouts, the Cub Scouts that are always just doing so much for our community with, for no reason, just because they love our community and they constantly are, are doing what they can for it and improving it and making it better. And that's an amazing, it's an amazing foundation for our community because the rest of us here on the council, we're elected to help represent the community. We have our city employees and it's all together, but the foundation that our citizens provide, especially the civic clubs, the churches and the, and, and the volunteers is what makes, that sets apart from other cities. So thank you to the Cottle Foundation. Okay, moving on, open forum. We have open forum, we have several people signed up to speak at open forum. We'll start with Dan Whale, Dan Wells. Okay. These are different ones each of. Oh, it's a package, okay.
All right, thank you, thank you very much, Mayor. First of all, congratulations to you, especially the first lady mayor of the city. That's awesome. I'm very, I have a daughter and two daughters and I'm very proud of you. That's wonderful. And also Jackie and Victor, great, and you all returning, thanks for your service. My name is Dan Wells, I live on Quail Avenue and I read the Gazette and being patriotic, I saw that there were going to be flags on the, on the Curtis Parkway. So I went and looked at the flags and I admired them and I thought they were very, you know, great. But also being curious, I noticed they had a hashtag, One Nation. And I don't know what One Nation is. Hashtag One Nation, hashtag Miami Springs, I don't know what Miami Springs is, but I don't know what One Nation. So I went home and I looked it up. I Googled it and as you can see there, One Nation is a, is a right wing 501(c) dark money fundraising group. And being a resident of Miami Springs, I know there was some of the ordinances, but one of the ordinances is that no political signs allowed on public property. So I don't know how that happened. I don't know if there, I don't know who approved that. I'm assuming somebody in our government office, offices, there's somebody that looks at the stuff that's going on public property and says the A or A is whether or not it's, it meets our law. But I don't believe that does. I think it's a political sign. I think it was, it was either put in there by accident or put in there on purpose. I don't know, I don't really care, but it violates our, I, I copied our section 150, part 29. If you look down in the middle of the page, prohibited signs, political signs are not allowed on public property. So somehow that slid by at this point. I forget, you know, who, who messed up and let it happen, I don't know, but I think that it needs to come down. One Nation is, is clearly a, a fundraising, dark money fundraising group to get around our campaign laws. I don't believe the city of Miami Springs supports that and I, and I don't think my tax dollars should support that either. So at this point, I was just, I know you're not going to address it tonight, but I would appreciate if you all look into that. And, and I don't like to just bring problems, I like to also bring solutions. It could be very simply taken care of with a can of Kils. Somebody walks up along Curtis Parkway, Kils will cover anything. I just spray paint over the One Nation part and problem solved. If you, if whoever owns the science doesn't want that, duct tape, duct tape, there's, there were scouts in here tonight, everybody knows duct tape solves a lot of problems. So that's it. Thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it. Again, congratulations. I don't mean to bring controversy at the very first minute.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention. Next on the agenda is Richard Block, Councilman Block from the city of, Village of Virginia Gardens.
Right, um, I want to speak as a councilman, 20 years in Virginia Gardens, we have no term limits, so they put up with me for 20 years. But in the 20 years that I've been a councilman, I couldn't have asked for a better city to be neighboring with. You people are so beautiful. You've done so many things for us. And I'm with those little guy on the, on the block, but you lift us up and we're so, from the mayor on down, the whole city council, congratulations to you guys. Bill Alonso, what can I say? He's just a marvel. So that, that's the end of the city council speaking, but now I'm speaking for the Miami Springs Historical Society, of which I am a board member, in relationship to the flags and the placards that are on Curtis Parkway. And for the third time, I'm going to say as, pledge allegiance to the flag and their flags out there, 50 flags of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, One Nation, that's what we are. We're One Nation, all right? Unto God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. That's what we are, all right? And the flags and the placards are apolitical. I seen Jennifer Graham as president of the Historical Society, turned out 60 signs with pictures of historical sites, monuments, everything that has to do with the history of the United States and they were placed there with civic pride. It wasn't any case of favoring one party or one slant, conservative, liberal, socialist, it has nothing to do with it. It has to do with Miami Springs. And it's to give the citizens of Miami Springs an overview of our city's rich and glorious history. So who would want to take that down? And because it has One Nation in there, it's quibbling over nothing. You know what? If Antifa funded a food distribution program in this city, I wouldn't be miffed. I'd be happy that they're funding it. So I would ask you to take in consideration that this is the people that worked on this project, maybe, I don't even know for sure, got funding for this place or not, it doesn't make a bit of difference. It's not a hooey. It's what it represents. It represents your city, our cities together, and it should be considered that way. And if somebody's offended, well, there's a lot of people in this country being offended at the drop of a hat. So I would ask the city council to keep that thing up, educate our young children as they walk up and down Curtis Parkway, our old seniors, and motivate, motivate people in their middle age to see what Miami Springs is about. And I would invite Mr. Wells to join the Historical Society. I'd, I'd like to see you in the, if you are, even better, but become an active member.
Okay, let's, let's keep this, it's the public.
No, I, I just want to, I just want to invite him.
Y'all can talk afterwards.
I want to invite him publicly to join the Historical Society, right?
The, the public forum, thank you, Councilman Block, thank you, great comments. The public forum, I just want to remind everyone, the public forum is for us to hear comments from residents who have signed up to speak, but because it's not an agenda item, the council doesn't respond to the public forum issues that are mentioned. However, after the public forum, you can speak with one of the city representatives and they can follow up with you if you, you want additional information or you want a council person to reach out to you. Okay, all right, next on the city agenda, on the public forum signed up to speak is, sorry I have to put on my glasses, Marcia Braun.
Good evening. Commissioner Sosso said, this is a happy day for Miami Springs, and indeed it is. I came in just filled with hope and I extend that because of this wonderful council before us. Many of us are hopeful for a new day, a happy new day in an already lovely city. Until today, I did not, not know Dan Wells. I have seen the signs, but only in passing on Curtis Parkway. And as recently as yesterday, I thought to stop and look for Kansas, which is my home state, and see if there was anything about Kansas, but I didn't. So I was surprised to hear, and I've, I've now seen photos and I will visit and I will look for Kansas, but I will be very upset because there is a hashtag that says One Nation. And until today, I didn't really know what One Nation was, but it is a 501(c) and their mission is working to preserve Republican Senate majority. That is what their stated mission is. Now, it's interesting because not all the signs have the hashtag. For example, the signs from the Historical Society do not have that hashtag. I think what Mr. Wells is asking is that on the signs that do have that hashtag tag, which is really political advertising, that that be removed. Because it's more than from the Pledge of Allegiance, it is actually political advertising. So I decided that I would speak because I think it is the new day and I have lived here for 48 years and I have never addressed our council. I've written letters and I've made calls and things like that, and I know each and every one of you personally, which is such a blessing for this girl from Kansas. So I appreciate that a lot. But I'm hopeful, and the reason that I said yes, I will speak, that it will be a new day for all of our citizens that will really take an interest more than a perfunctory passing by and notice things. And I thank Mr. Dan Wells for doing that, for taking the closer look, which was an important closer look. So I thank you that you will be considering the issue that he's brought up with seriousness of purpose because that's why you all are here. You're here to, to protect us and to protect our community and our democracy. And I look forward to, to your discussion about this issue. And I think we should all take that walk on Curtis Parkway. So thank you for listening. Thank you.
Thanks, Marcia.
Thank you, great comments. Next on the open forum is Nahal Perera.
Very good evening to you, Madam Mayor, the first female mayor of the city of Miami Springs since 1926. And we are very proud of you. We are proud of Councilwoman Jackie Bravo, Dr. Victor Vasquez, returning. We are proud of Councilwoman Jackie Bravo, Dr. Victor Vasquez, Returning Vice Chairman Bob Best, and Dr. Fajet. And we appreciate it also, Mr. William Alonso, the city manager, and everybody who works with the city. I've lived here 51 years, and I've known Captain Dan Wells for 50 years. And one of the reasons he called me today was for the very reason this young lady spoke just now. I had no clue. My wife and I, we live off the Wald Drive, and we walk on Curtis Parkway a lot, especially due to COVID-19. Many times we walk there. We stop and we read those. I saw pound One Nation that Dan brought to my attention. He said, do you know what that is? I said, I have no clue. I thought it was a company that built that, those banners, and I saw pound Miami Springs, and so I started researching it. I just didn't listen to what he said, because he's a pilot, I'm a pilot, we like to investigate. He's the number one pilot for United Passes Service, by the way, out of 15,000 pilots I think you have now. He went to United Passes Service, he asked me to join him, like I did two other hours, small brief story, I went to United. Anyway, back at the ranch, the reason I'm speaking is because having lived here for almost half a century, I feel it is important. I've never spoken at a council meeting before, except one time, many years ago, for an Air Force colonel and his wife, Lieutenant Colonel, who needed to get a variance, then I spoke to the board at the city hall, and I addressed Mr. Perez, I believe was in charge back then. But I agree with Dan, all the points, I don't want to take up too much time, and this young lady who just spoke. It should not be, we should not have, and nobody's, and I respect the views of the councilwoman from Virginia Gardens. I know Mayor Deano, I know a lot of people there. They're very nice people too, like we are. All we are saying is, the three of us, that that political message, as subliminal as it may be, should not be in any property of the city of Miami Springs, because I'd never seen that before, being slipped into signs, and like you all, all's pledged to do is to do what is best for our city. And that's why we love the city of Miami Springs, and we love living here. Thank you for listening to my short, brief message, and congratulations to all of you, and all the best.
Thanks, Nahal.
Thank you. And we have also Yvonne Schoenberger.
I'm not going to be speaking, everything I was going to say enough, the cream helps people. I'm such a deputy pastor.
Thank you. That completes the public forum.
I'm trying to find the thing where I could leave.
Okay. All right, come on up, come on up. It's, just so you know, in the future, it'll be up at the podium, and you just arrive, you need to be here a little bit before the meeting starts to sign up.
I was here before, I just didn't see the.
Okay, no problem. Go on.
Hi, I'm a resident of Miami Springs for the past 20 years. My name's Miguel Peter, I live over on Naperville. And one of the things is that I just wanted to find, I know that it's an open forum and not, you're not dealing with the issue, is the, because I had, I tried to talk to the, one of the, you know, people that writes up the citations, because I thought that we had visited the issue of the hedges. I just got a notice saying that I had to cut my edges back by 10 feet, you know, and to three foot level. And I remember when we had that forum, like 10 years ago or eight years ago, and we visited this thing, and I thought it was put on the back, you know, it just went away, because there was the whole, this whole room was full, not this room, but, you know, where the meeting held was packed with residents over that issue. And now I'm getting a thing telling me that I'm getting fined, and so I had brought the guy who owns the gardening company, who had the same issue, he lives in Miami Springs too, and he just, he didn't want to stay for the political haberdashery. So I came to, I don't understand what happened with the issue, and if there is a way that I can bring this up or something, I would like to be better informed. So I thought the only place that I could come was to the city council. And by the way, congratulations, because, you know, you're a lovely neighbor, but, you know, it's nice to see you. And anyway, so I thought, you know, because I've got two neighbors next, like next door that live to me, that both have not only high edges, but their grass is up to here and out of control, and that doesn't seem to bother anybody, but I keep, you know, the gardeners that take care of my house, including me, do this on a biweekly, you know, and I never had any kind of problems with this, and then all of a sudden, and I remember when this issue came up, and I remember it was, I think it was in the laws of Miami Springs or whatever it was, since like the 1960s or something, and it was brought up like six, seven years ago, and like I said, it could be longer, you know, time flies as you get older, and it was, you know, shelved, it was like, and now it's getting brought back up, and I got a notification telling me that I'm going to get fined, and I've got, you know, I work really hard on my edges, and I like, you know, I like the look, I don't like the ugly fences that my neighbors have, you know, but I don't complain about any of that, I don't, their trees are coming down on my house, and, you know, I try to get along with everybody, but it seems that this is an issue, and I would like somebody maybe, you know, after or tell me where to go, and, because I tried to talk to the person who handed us the notification, and she was like, well, you know, there's nothing I can do about it, this is the way it is, and so.
So leave your information with our city clerk, and she can get back to you as to.
Okay, I appreciate it, and I'm sorry if I rattled, because it's a very momentous.
He's going to leave his information there, and I called his name. Oh, yeah, no, you're right, you're right. Okay, thank you, Councilman. Go ahead and state your name on the.
Yes.
I think he did at the beginning. The next agenda item is the approval of the council minutes from the March 22 regular meeting.
Through the chair, motion to move 6A, Mayor.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Best.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bravo.
Aye.
Councilman Behut.
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez.
Aye.
Mayor Mitchell.
Yes. Okay, we have no reports from the boards or commissions, the public hearings, we have none. Consent agenda is the next item. Resolution A, William or Tammy are going to read that?
Yes. This is a resolution of the mayor and the city council of the city of Miami Springs, Florida, approving the purchase order of police motorcycle radar equipment from Applied Concepts, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $14,008, providing for authorization and providing for an effective date.
Take a vote.
Mayor, may I ask that A and B be read simultaneously?
Okay.
Read number two.
No one has an objection?
I'm sorry?
Go ahead, Tammy.
This is a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Miami Springs, Florida, approving a pool maintenance services agreement with Supreme Chemical and Pool Supply, Inc., in an amount not to exceed the budgeted funds, providing for authorization and providing for an effective date.
Through the chair, motion to move 9A, 9B, with discussion.
Second. Councilman Behut, second?
No.
No, okay, Councilman Vasquez, all right.
With discussion, through the chair. The reason that typically on a consent agenda, listing of items, these are items that we have already budgeted through the last budget, through the 2021 budget for the city, and the money is already allocated for it, it's not above, you know, above what is already been, what we've already voted on. So that's why you can lump them like that. You have it, Mayor.
Any discussion?
Mayor, I had a question for Tammy or Mr. Alonso, this is a second five-year contract with the option to renew yearly, correct? So we had already done five years with them, and now this is a second five-year contract with a one-year option. Okay, thank you.
And William, could you tell me the amount not to exceed budgeted funds? What are the budgeted funds for that, for item B? Item B, sorry. I know we already set it aside, but I'm curious as to what that was.
15,500. It was right near there, William.
Yes, 15,500.
It's in the, it's not in the resolution, but it's in the.
The memo.
Okay. All right, any further discussion? Take the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Best.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bravo.
Aye.
Councilman Behut.
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez.
Aye.
Mayor Mitchell.
Yes. We don't have any old business to discuss, under new business, we have a resolution, resolution 11A.
The city council of the city of Miami Springs, Florida, approving a statewide mutual aid agreement with the Florida Division of Emergency Management, providing for authorization, providing for an effective date. This is, we should have done this quality back a couple of years ago, but it fell through the cracks, and then the state sent us an email, well, not the state, the Miami-Dade County Emergency Management, that all jurisdictions must become a signatory to this. So they sent me this email, I forwarded it to Heidi, and that's why it's before you, because this is just a mutual aid agreement. For example, right now with the COVID situation, I'm working with the state to get a mobile vaccine unit here in the city in the next couple of weeks. So that's where this comes in, where we have a mutual aid, where the state can come in in case of any natural disaster or any other problem that we might need state help, we need to have this in place. All the municipalities have signed it already, we're the only ones that haven't done it, so I need to get this through tomorrow.
We're catching up and getting it right, yeah. Motion to move the item, Mayor.
Second. Any discussion, any further questions? William, I just wanted to reiterate that as part of this, I see it as our hurricane and emergency procedures for the city, let's make sure that we have them by before the start of hurricane season this year. There's the possibility that they're looking at even moving the hurricane season up a little bit, because we've been starting to have storms, significant storms in May, so let's make sure we have that all up to date in our annual hurricane and emergency procedure manual. Okay, no other discussion? Take the roll, please, Erica.
Vice Mayor Best.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bravo.
Aye.
Councilman Behut.
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez.
Aye.
Mayor Mitchell.
Yes. Next item is under other business, 12A. This is a request, I asked for a discussion with our new city council, and I don't want to take a lot of time now, because this is the first meeting and a lot has to sink in, but what I'd like to do is, if we all agree, is to set a date for a workshop, a town hall, if you will, but it'll be in the form of a workshop, where we get a chance to listen to each other's goals, ideas of, you know, what are important priorities for each of us sitting here, and also give the residents an opportunity to speak to us about what they feel are important initiatives that the city should take. So if everyone is in agreement with that, I'd like to go ahead and agree on a date for the workshop.
Through the chair, I'm certainly in agreement. I spent a fair amount of time on this, actually, once I saw it on the agenda. I got like 17 items I was going to just bring to the table tonight for everyone's consideration, going forward, of course, not to discuss tonight. If you don't mind, Mayor, I'll mention them all. I'll be brief.
Okay.
As brief as I can. Strategic planning initiatives, first of all, traffic calming, that seems to be a big thing in this town. I hear it all the time from people, in some way, shape, or form, either sting operations and/or some tools to slow traffic down. Second, percentage of concrete footprints allowable on a property. Third, tree trim maintenance and replanning. Fourth, electrical infrastructure, perhaps in saying that, some impetuses to businesses that go that route. Certainly the bed tax, full court press on that, no question. Federal relief bill, we've got a ton of money coming at us, we don't know where we're going to get it, but that's got to be discerned, how's we're going to spend that. And there's a couple of things going, of course, the mayor, at the last meeting, mentioned the East End flooding issue, and certainly South Royal, that project. Report on underground wiring matrix by FP&L. I know that the first part of that was, it was a three-year and then three-year, correct? And the first one is, should be coming pretty close to the first three years, and they've made a lot of progress. People, folks have seen all over town how they're pushing these wires underground, it's to our benefit that that happens. Status on the Washington Gym property, Washington Gym, I know that that was part of the package originally, and that kind of hasn't, we haven't heard. The status of the Optimist property, which I understand is for sale. The American Legion Post 32 War Memorial Project, which going forward, you're going to hear a lot more about. It's an initiative by the American Legion, not a council issue, but so everyone's aware. Code compliance teeth, there's been a lot of talk tonight about signs and stuff. Well, code compliance should have some teeth relative to dealing with this stuff, and that's where that should be, should have been funneled tonight, not in front of us here. It's, we're getting ready for budget time, think about that, because that's the time that we need to get stuff done and put it in place for the next fiscal year. Coordination with the city manager, very, very important going forward. He runs the city, we overlook it, he runs it. Talk to him, don't be afraid to talk to him. William, I hope I'm not hurting you here, but it's very important that he is in the loop on just, on anything, any of the initiatives that any of us, any of us colleagues have up here. He's the kingpin. And then finally, street, not finally, but street paving and the matrix plan for sidewalks. I know that that was a big initiative about four or five years ago, several have been done, but there's still a lot that have not been completed yet, and I'm sure William has a plan for that going forward. But this is part of the strategic initiatives that you asked for. The Crush Rock and the levees, I think that we're not complete on that. I know that that kind of stopped in Tallahassee a couple of years ago, where it was almost done, and then it just, an open-ended issue. And then collective, a collective bargaining jumpstart with the cops. I mentioned that the last time that we did the collective bargain, and it went famously, and my point here is that we just start talking to them a little bit ahead of time, so we don't run into the 11th hour and have to deal with it in executive session and all of that. That's what I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Well, we're going to have a workshop, so let's schedule a workshop, but I think because Councilwoman Best has so many years of experience on the council and knows so many of these issues that have been going on for so long, I think it behooves the rest of the council, the newer council, to get an idea, as you think for the workshop, as you prepare for the workshop, to get an idea of some of the things that have been brewing or in progress and stuff. But what I'd like to ask for is for us to agree on a date for a workshop. A workshop is different from a meeting, it's, as you know, because of the sunshine law, we can't meet and discuss issues unless it's at a public forum. So if we schedule a workshop, it's a way for us to talk together on strategic planning for the city, which really, we have no strategic plan, and the strategic planning will be something that each of us brings, our major issues, concerns, and we can kind of, at least know where we all are on certain issues, what's important, but also to make it in the form of, you know, a town hall meeting that we hear from residents, and we may need more than one workshop on this, we may get started in one, it may last longer than we need to, and we need to, and that's fine, if that's, but very often, when a new council starts, everyone's starting from their side, and because we can only meet at the meetings, you know, we're all kind of clueless of not having a chance of being able to work together on, you know, on what we think are the most important issues for the city. So if everyone's in agreement with that, with having a workshop?
I'm in agreement with having a workshop, and with setting a date for us to be able to have a discussion that's structured, where we can all.
Discuss. Okay. Discuss and agree. Okay, how about, and I'm thinking of the workshop, because I'd really like to get moving with this stuff. And as William mentioned, you know, with emergency management, hurricane season is right around the corner. I get very nervous, that's my risk management background, around hurricane season, because no matter how much planning we do, no matter how many things we've got, you know, for the city going on, if a really major hurricane hits, everything gets tabled, and for the next few months, we're just in recovery zone, you know, in recovery mode, and that's all we can do. So I'd like to get as much as we can done, keep our fingers crossed that we don't get a major hurricane, but get the council moving on this. I was thinking of the first Monday in May, which is when we don't have a regular council meeting scheduled. May, it'll be May 2nd, I believe, no, May 3rd?
May 3rd. There may be a board of adjustment meeting that night. I have to confirm.
Well, do we have to pick a date right now at the meeting? Heidi, can we, can you send it, and then, we have to announce the date to the public?
The clerk, the clerk can work with everyone on council.
Okay.
And set a date, and it'll be announced.
And then it'll be announced to the public. All right, is that everyone in agreement with that?
Sure.
Okay, do we need to take a vote on this to have a workshop?
Oh, consensus.
Consensus? Consent? Everyone's consent?
Yeah.
Okay.
Through the chair, I'd like to applaud the mayor for bringing this up in her very first meeting, because I think this is extremely important. And it's going to give us, it's going to give us a leg up going into the budget process, too. Perfect timing.
Thank you, Councilman. All right, and the next agenda item, 12B, is also a request by me to, I'd like for us to discuss the city boards. And the city boards, we don't need to have a workshop for that, I think, possibly for the next city council meeting. We can put it as an agenda item. But as most of you would, well, you may not, today's your first meeting for Councilwoman Bravo and Councilman Vasquez, but we have a lot of city boards, advisory boards. Some of them are very active, are constantly working on it, and others have been, for lack of another word, dormant. And they're dormant because the council has not directed, it's not because the boards haven't done their job, it's because the council has not directed business to the board, asked them for input on certain issues. So what I'd like to do is to have our city clerk provide all the council with information on the current boards that we have, when they last met, when the meeting dates have been. And then at the next meeting, consider the possibility of sunsetting the boards that haven't met. Some boards haven't met in five years, ten years even, and we still appoint someone to it. It's ludicrous to me to appoint someone to a board and say, by the way, they've never met, but we'll call you if, you know, we ever do. And what I think we can do with these boards that we sunset is, should we need input in advisory board like that, in the future, we set up a task force or a committee to deal with it directly, similar to what we did with the Art in Public Places for the senior center, where we formed a committee, everyone appointed someone, they had a task to do. Once that was passed, then the committee disbanded, and they provided the information, the input to the board. So if everyone is in agreement with that, that would be an agenda item for the next meeting. And we can invite, if any of the board members, the advisory board members, want to come and speak at the next council meeting, they'd be more than welcome to, and give us their input also. Any?
Agree.
Comments from anyone? Okay.
Do you think staff could provide us with the list?
They will provide you.
Open seats as well?
Open seats, and for each board, when, you'll see that some of the boards meet regularly, and others haven't met in years.
That information was included in the packet this time around, but I will resend that information.
Okay, all right. Is that then just, I have everyone's consent to, it'll be an agenda item for the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay, great. And those are two things we can tackle right off the bat.
Yep.
Okay, the next item are the reports and recommendations from the city attorney.
Welcome to the new council members. We look forward to working with you. Congratulations, Mayor, on your election. And to the returning council members, we're super excited to see you back on the dais. I have no further reports at this time.
Thank you, Heidi. From the city manager?
I think, Mayor, just welcome to the new council. Looking forward to working with you. As Councilman Vice Mayor Best pointed out, he's got his list of priorities. And when we have our workshop, I'll give you our list of what we're working on, our priorities. And as you know, it only takes money. And, you know, you have to understand that we have aging infrastructure in the city, including our city hall, including, for example, this building is about ten years old. It already needs a paint job outside. I don't know if you've seen, outside, we've got issues with the racquetball by the tennis courts. We have the flooding issue on the east side of town. We have other major projects that we're trying to get funding for, the median project on North Row, Poensiana, the beautification of East Drive. We want to do a circle over by East Drive and Oakwood, which has been the scene of a lot of accidents in that area. And the residents in that area have been clamoring for some type of traffic calming. And when you talk traffic calming, we're at the mercy of the county, because they control all of that. And on that particular intersection on East and Oakwood, they would not allow us to put four-way stop signs, because they feel the traffic will back up into 36th Street. So the only thing that would allow us to do is a traffic circle, as long as we pay for it, of course. So, you know, there are a lot of challenges that we have ahead of us for next budget year. You know, I'd like to see if maybe we can add another police officer. We've had it in the last three years. We've gone from forty-three to forty-five. I want to see if I can get at least one more in next year's budget. That's another challenge. If we could get some of the bed tax money from Tallahassee, that would allow us to hire up to ten officers, if we get the amount of money that we're entitled to. So there are a lot of things, you know, like I said, I have my own list of stuff.
And that's, and that will be the purpose of the workshop that, but I think it's really important that you've heard from Vice Mayor Best, who has so many years of experience here and knows so many issues that are still in progress. And from our city manager for the new council members, to before the next workshop, you can kind of follow up with them, with him, with our city manager on some of those and get an idea. And then, of course, you'll have your own initiatives and your own goals and your own, what you see priorities, and at least we'll all have a common idea. And of course, hearing from the residents, which we're here to serve, information. And they can, at a town hall or the workshop meeting, is their chance to speak to all of us together. Because very often, one of us will hear from a resident, but we can't speak to each other. So you haven't heard this, and unless the resident happens to reach out to all of us, just one of us knows that this is a concern, and this is an opportunity for us to kind of all be on the same page, starting out. And if we need to repeat it, or if we need to have a second workshop as a follow-up, we'll go ahead and do that. Okay, great. Tammy, do you have some stuff?
First of all, welcome. Congratulations to the new council members. For the next two weeks' worth of events, we have the weekly food distribution here at the community center on Thursday, April 15th, from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM. Saturday, April 17th, at 7:00 AM, we have the River Cities 5K at the community center. On Monday, April 19th, at 11:30 to 4:30 PM, we have the One Blood Drive at the community center. On Tuesday, April 20th, at 6:00 PM, we have the virtual Q and A with Omar about the summer camp at our community center. And then on Saturday, April 24th, from 10:00 to 2:00, we have the National Take Back Initiative at our CPO office.
Okay, that's it. Thank you. All right, so we'll start with the city council. Let's do Vice Mayor Best.
Thank you, Mayor. First off, congratulations to you.
You, too?
Very much so, very much so, for leading our city two years hence, going forward. And I'm sure that we're going to have some, we're going to get some good things done here. And also to Councilwoman Bravo and to Councilman Vasquez down the end there. I know we're like sixty feet apart, Vic, and you can't hear me, but that's, that's.
I'm trying.
Listen, I didn't mean to cast any aspersions earlier by putting off that laundry list out. But I wanted to, I did that for a reason, because there is so much in this town. Now, I'm a realist. We're not going to get all that done. That was seventeen line items I tried. I even left one out on purpose. But we're not going to get all that done in two years. It's not going to happen. And, you know, I'm enough of a realist to recognize, I would love to be able to throw $2 trillion, $2 trillion at an infrastructure project in Miami Springs. I'd love it, believe me. It'd be on the top of the world. Don't have that power, none of us do. But the federal government can print money, states can't. Obviously municipalities can't. So the beauty of our system here in this town is the fact that we have a budget, and it's got to be balanced. One penny either side of the aisle, got to be balanced. And that makes us think, and it makes us work, and in my view, it makes us better people, because we have to prioritize. And that's kind of the message I want to leave you with tonight, other than you ran a good first meeting, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Bravo.
I'm just really excited to be here on this journey. I'm just really, I want to see what's going to happen in two years and all the positive things that we're going to do for our community. We all have, we are motivated to do wonderful things. I have a list myself. Bob beat me to it. And can't wait for the workshop. I think it's going to be very helpful to really just jot off our priorities and make our community happy.
Wonderful, thank you. Councilman Behat.
Thank you, Mayor. So I wanted to congratulate the new members of the council. I know how hard it is to campaign and to win, and so congratulations to you guys. I know you're doing it for the right reasons and that you'll do your best to serve the city. And congratulations to Vice Mayor Best for running on the post. Great, congratulations to the new mayor for your historic appointment to the mayorship. So I think you're also doing it for the right reasons, and I look forward to serving with you. I wanted to say that with respect to the flag project, because I actually just volunteered my time to hammer in spikes and put things up at four in the morning, on Easter morning. Just, I appreciate the residents that brought to our attention their concern. I think that it's great that we can rely on residents to be the eyes and ears for us. I would caution to be open to context, because I know the two residents that spearheaded this flag project, they did it last year, they do it at their own expense, and they do it, they both happen to live on Curtis Parkway, and they do it just to beautify the walkpath. They did it last year, and they could only afford fifty flags. And this year, more people wanted to do it, because it was, it kind of was such an uplifting thing to see those flags, particularly at a time when, when they did it last year, we were in the middle of pandemic, and things were kind of so divisive. And I've spoken to residents about, I wish that we weren't so divided. I went to, I offered to just kind of help hammer spikes in the ground and put up flags again at four in the morning. And I also, they wanted to expand it, because the people gave them such wonderful feedback about them as beautiful. So they ended up doing 125 flags this year. And last year, they had state, they had signs for all the different state mottos. And as a matter of fact, they donated the flags last year to charity, and those charities sold the flags to make money for their charity. So they're literally, and they are the most, they are the two, these two residents are the most unassuming, like they don't want any credit for it, like they just wanted to do something beautiful for the city. And they wanted, because they were going to have more flags, they wanted to have more signs. I got them in contact with the Miami Springs Historical Society. I think they had mentioned Ms. Jennifer Graham. And she, you know, tirelessly got a bunch of information, like just, you know, fun facts and things to know about the history of Glenn Curtis in Miami Springs, because we're all kind of Glenn Curtis geeks, at least I am. And I can assure you in talking to the people, I would just ask you to be open to context. They were just doing this just to do something beautiful. If it were something, if it were some kind of iconography of hate group or something, I, while you guys were talking, obviously, everything is a concern. I listen, I take everything. I looked up One Nation and saw a slow pitch softball organization. I also saw something, you know, was an Australian conservative group. But I also saw a One Nation commission, which is actually an anti-racism commission. If it weren't something that is a phrase that's coming out of the Fledge of Allegiance, that's basically talking about unity, if it were something that were specific to a group, I would tell you, and if I didn't know the people that had put it on, I would tell you, hey, you know, let's dig further. But I can tell you just from my, you know, it was two residents that did it last year, and nobody asked them to, they just, they asked for permission to put it out, and they just put up flags with those state mottos and everything. Everybody was okay with it, and there was no agenda underlying this. It was just to put up some beautiful flags. And I would just argue that instead of, you know, because I know that Mr. Wells was saying that he took a closer look. I think if you dig deep enough, you can find something. I think that this is, I can, at least, my opinion, just for what it's worth, it was a very benign, just trying to do something nice for the computer, for the community, that had nothing to do with the political party. Again, when I researched it, there were a bunch of different things that, it's One Nation, it's part of our Fledge of Allegiance. So I'm all for anybody who wants to research it any further, but I would have to, I would have to just give my, because again, I was involved in helping to put up the flags. It was really just a labor of love to do something nice and beautiful for the community. And I didn't get any sense whatsoever that it was tied to any political party or any agenda or anything. They actually didn't even want any credit, like they were like, you know, just like, we just want people, that's why we did it at four in the morning. They want people to wake up on Easter and see this nice, you know, gesture, and then have it up until Fourth of July, which will probably get up at four in the morning and bring them down. So I would just ask people to be open to hearing context, and that this is just something that was a nice thing. If it were something that said, you know, One Nation Party at the end or something like that, but it's One Nation and Under God. I mean, I think that's what the, I think that's what was trying to be conveyed there. I don't think that it was something that had anything to do with anything political. So just my two cents worth. So again, thank you. Congratulations to everyone.
All right, and Councilman Vasquez.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I think the first thing I need to learn is, how do I get called upon? What's the procedure? So, but that's cool. I'm going to learn. First of all, I'm delighted to be here tonight with all of you on this new council, with my family, with friends and residents and voters. I feel humbled by this. I can't wait to really get to work on this monumental list that Bob has given us. I'm only kidding, Bob. I do agree with a number of things, and I have a few things to add to that. And we'll be submitting those ideas to you, I suppose.
No, you'll have them for the workshop.
Right, the workshop, okay. So, and, so, you know, I think that these are all great ideas. And like Bob said, I don't think we can, you know, do them all, but, you know, there are some that are related to, you know, even our relationship with the hotels nearby, right? Has to do with the bed tax, has to do with how residents feel about some of those, and we'll have those. I don't differ a whole lot from the issue about the flags, as you pointed out. And maybe exactly as you pointed out, I think, you know, some folks found something and they found it objectionable for a very specific reason. I love when people do things, especially with our flags. I kept trying to think of the same thing, you know, I just got to stop and walk and look, right? Because it's hard to, you see the pictures, and I'm a historian, so I love to see those things. And just clarify whatever misconceptions there may be about it, so thank you very much. I'm glad to be here.
And I guess, well, of course, thank you for the new council. It's an honor, a privilege to work with you, to represent together, do our best for our city. I know we're not going to agree on everything. Hopefully, we won't agree on everything. Each of us will have different issues. Each of us will have different issues, but it's a democracy, and sometimes it'll be five, five-all vote on something. And there will be times when it may be two, three, four, one, whatever, and that's fine. That's, that's how this council is set up. I would, Councilman Best talked about, there's a lot of things that aren't gonna be done in two years. Nothing really in the city's intended to be done. I mean, ideally, if it can be done during one term, we're moving along with something that's wonderful, and there are a lot of, of issues that we can resolve quickly. But in reality, and William can attest to this, a lot of issues with the city take a long time. And just because the, the council's term is up, or the council's new, or whatever, the issues don't resolve themselves. They don't care. They're there. And the, a lot of the issues that will come before this council are things that have been in progress for a long time, and hopefully, while we're on this council, they can be resolved. If not, I expect that we've made, moved them along in a better way so that when we hand them off to the next council, they're closer to being completed, and that's the reality of, of how government works. I see our role as, you know, the opportunity, the, the window of opportunity that we're all here together. We'll do the very best we can for the city, even though we may not agree on what the priorities are, or what issues, you know, or how issues should be resolved. But, or what I do expect is that all of us have a common goal of doing the best we can for the city so that the city that was handed to us from the former council and Mayor Bain is in good condition, will hopefully make it better in our next two years, so that when we hand it forward to future councils, it's something that we can be proud of. And there will be issues that will be unresolved, but we move them along as much as we can. So with that, I want to thank all of you. And one thing that I do want to mention with the two-party system, this is a nonpartisan. Our city is nonpartisan. Each of us may have, belong to a party, or may be independent. It doesn't matter. That should never come into our decision-making in a nonpartisan community like ours, of elected officials. We should be voting not based on our party allegiance, which doesn't matter, because we're, we should be based, we should be voting on, on the issue itself. And if we're doing that, and you'll, and hopefully, that's what will happen, we're doing the best we can for our city. Also, I just want to caution everyone that it's really important that we don't let party, partisanship come into this, because we're dependent on this county, on the state, on legislators to provide us with funding and services we need. And if they perceive us a certain way or a certain way, depending on who's in power, they can decide to, you know, be a little more stingy or a little more. So it behooves all of us to be nonpartisan, to work the best we can for our city, and to talk about the issues and, and the needs that we need. Okay? And with that, this meeting is adjourned.
The city council could stay for a picture? If the city council could stay for a picture? Thank you.